I'd like to call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our ad, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I'll have the clerk please call the roll.
Trustee Germaine?
Here.
Trustee Colaini?
Absent.
Trustee Harper?
Absent.
Absent. Trustee Petrucci?
Here.
Supervisor Fountain?
Here.
Treasurer Horning?
Here.
Clerk Chofu?
Here.
Thank you. Item number four is approval of our meeting agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Treasurer Horning, second by Trustee Germaine. Any discussion? Being none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. Motion carries. Call to the public? Anybody at call to the public this evening? Nobody at call to the public. We'll move on to item number six, which is approval of our consent agenda. I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Petrucci, second by Treasurer Horning. Any discussion? Being none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. Motion carries. We have two applicants this evening. The first one is Kentucky Fried Chicken. This is a special land use permit for a drive-through. And good evening. If you'd like to come forward, we also have Dave Campbell here, our planner. And welcome, by the way. Dave, would you like to just come forward and just through the boards, so we know what we're here for tonight?
Sure.
And what action perhaps the Planning Commission? Trustee Colaini is our liaison to the Planning Commission, and he is absent this evening. Dave was nice enough, our planner, to come in this evening and help us out with this. So thanks for showing up. I appreciate it, Dave.
So what you have in front of you is a site plan with a special land use permit application for a drive-through KFC restaurant on the north side of M-59, on a vacant piece of property just west of the Heartland Point Plaza multi-tenant commercial center. So Heartland Point Plaza is where the Big B Coffee, the Little Caesar's, and the Sherwin-Williams are. The vacant property in question is 3.6 acres approximately. And the property is zone general commercial. So any drive-through use in the general commercial zoning district requires special land use approval. And only the Township Board can approve a special land use per the procedures of our zoning ordinance. Before a special land use can come before the Township Board, it first has to go in front of the Planning Commission at a public hearing. So the Planning Commission held that public hearing on January 29th. And subsequent to that public hearing, the Planning Commission had opportunity to discuss a number of things with the applicant. And the Planning Commission then made a motion to recommend special land use approval, recommend that the Board approve the special land use conditional upon the site plan coming back to the Planning Commission for their approval. So just to be clear, the Planning Commission has the authority to approve the site plan. The Township Board has the authority to approve the special land use. And the Planning Commission's recommendation is for the Board to approve a special land use subject to that subsequent site plan approval from the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission wants the opportunity to work with the applicant on some outstanding issues that were discussed on January 29th, the design of the building, and the building materials, the architectural standards of our zoning ordinance. There were some issues with the landscaping, and with the parking, and with the drive-through design. We have had an opportunity to meet with the applicant subsequent to that meeting on January 29th. In fact, Planning Commission Chair Larry Fox and I sat down with these two gentlemen earlier this evening or afternoon. And they presented a revised building elevation that we think is much closer to what the Township's requirements are for architectural standards. So they are making progress on a lot of things, the site plan issues that the Planning Commission talked about on January 29th. So what the Board has the option of proceeding with tonight is, and what the Planning Department and the Planning Commission is recommending, is that the Board approve the special land use permit conditional upon that site plan approval from the Planning Commission at a meeting to be held in the very near future.
I'll make a motion to approve special land use permit 527 of the Kentucky Fried Chicken, subject to the site plan approval with the Planning Commission.
Support. Motion by Treasurer Horning, second by Trustee Petrucci. Any discussion? Questions?
I'd like to hear from the gentleman on the changes that was discussed this afternoon.
Sure. I'm Bill Beckett with WT Development. And with me tonight is Mr. Flannelling, who is the local KFC franchisee and owner of this project. We took good notes at the Planning Commission. We've had several renditions of the exterior elevations that have bounced back and forth. And we had a great meeting tonight. We've brought the building elevations into compliance with the percentage of materials, the allowable percentage of materials. We've softened some colors that were a concern. And we're working with KFC Corporation to accept our changes to their prototypical building. So they are used to seeing some changes. There's a lot of changes that have been made. As far as site plan goes, we've made good progress on the site plan. We've updated the landscape plan. We comply with the, it's now in compliance, and of course, your planning department needs to do the next review. But we have upgraded the landscape plan. We had some deficiencies around the detention pond and the screening of the residences at the rear. So we've addressed that in the revised plan. We're providing substantial landscape screening at the back of the site, closest to the development, rather than further back where the residential neighbors are located. So between the back of the building, between the back of KFC's building and the residential property line, there's 300 feet of natural vegetation buffer. Some of that will be developed here, but the large expanse that you see back behind the parking lot will remain as it is today. So we've made some good strides. We have a couple of things that resulted, that came out of the meeting today, and we're going to make a couple of adjustments and resubmit and see the Planning Commission next week, I'm sorry, next month.
Okay. Thank you. Any other board members have any questions?
It's not necessarily a question, but just an observation. Being that the site is rather deep, I was curious why you're trying to keep the building so close to M-59 as opposed to keeping it more in line with some of the other buildings that are in the area. Is that due to a terrain drop-off, or land balancing, or just get their attention?
Actually, one of the items in the first review was with regards to the front yard setback. We had proposed 68 feet. The requirement along M-59 is 80 feet. We've made that adjustment. We've moved the building back 12 feet. So it's not substantial from what you see here, but it is a different type of a design. We designed this with a fast food or a quick service restaurant. It's designed typically to have the primary parking on one side of the building, drive-through lane behind and on the other side. So it isn't typically designed as a shopping center or strip center or something like that where all the parking's out front. So there are some design standards and industry standards for this type of design, and that's what we're following here. It also, it will afford the owner the option of sometime in the future maybe looking at further development. But at this time, we only want to develop what we have.
If I may, it is worth pointing out, too, that the Heartland Point Plaza, which is the commercial building right next door to the east, in between there is a pretty significant wetland with a pretty significant grade drop-off. So I think that part of the reason that building is set back as far as it is is so that that developer at that time could have, could stay out of that wetland. And for that reason, you see the disparity between where that building is today as opposed to where KFC is looking to build theirs. One of the potential benefits of maximizing that distance between the KFC drive-through and the residential behind it is to, as best we can, minimize the impacts of the people who live back there. And so maximizing that distance hopefully minimizes the impacts on them.
And it looks like you did a lot of work on the lighting as well, to keep it on-site.
So, correct. One of the requirements of site plan approval that the Planning Commission will be taking another look at is our lighting standards. And those lighting standards include the maximum height of parking lot lighting, the design of the lighting fixture itself, make sure the lighting only shines down, not out. And also a photometric plan to show that by the time you get to their property lines, KFC's property lines, or well before then, that that light is negligible. So that, long story short, you do not have parking lot lights shining in people's backyards.
Thank you. Any other questions? Had a motion and a support. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Almost. Okay, our next item is Chestnut Development. Is there anybody this evening here from Chestnut Development? I would like to, we have a busy agenda tonight. I would like to table this to our next meeting.
Yes, sir. It's not like the applicant to not appear at a meeting such as this. And I'm starting to, I want to go back and look at our correspondence with the applicant to see if he was officially notified. We certainly had plenty of communication with the applicant, with the applicant's engineer. There was a time where we were on the phone multiple times per day. But I will acknowledge that I am now, I want to see whether or not we actually communicated that they would be on the agenda this evening. And if they were not communicating, if they were not notified of that, that's on me.
Manager Wickman, are we live on, could they be watching us at home?
Not on internet.
So my personal opinion is I think we should table it until they're here.
That's fine. I just wanted to be, if they're not here, it may very well be because I could have communicated better with them.
Entertainer motion to table?
Show move, support.
Motion by Trustee Petrucci, second by Trustee Germaine. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. Motion carries. Okay, item number eight is our Parks and Recreation Plan. This is our final approval. And apologize, we had our admin meeting. We were going through our agenda, and we kind of lost track that this should have been on there. So it was added later. However, we have spent at least two meetings.
Last meeting, we looked at the draft, talked about it.
The draft. And it's pretty straightforward. Is the, board members have any questions this evening for the, for this? This has to be done by the end of this month. So it could be an opportunity for grants and such to the state of Michigan at the end of the year, correct?
That is correct. Tonight, what I'm requesting is a formal adoption of the resolution to basically adopt the master plan as presented. If we meet this, or if we're able to approve it tonight, we'll be able to meet the March 1st deadline for submittal to the state of Michigan.
I move to approve the resolution for adoption of the Heartland Township Parks and Recreation Master Plan for 2015, 2020.
Support. Motion by Treasurer Horning, second by Trustee Petrucci. Any discussion?
It represented a lot of work. I'm glad we did get an outside consultant to help. But I know it took a lot of staff time as well. It's a very, very well-prepared document. I hope that the community has a chance to look at it.
There's also a lot of information here that could be used in other areas when it comes to planning, and some of the dates that were made, the projections and such, are up to the date and current. Any other comments, your questions?
See if I may, Mr. Supervisor, just as a follow-up to this, of course, we want to thank the Parks Tax Force who dove into this and provided a lot of good feedback, recommendations in this plan, as well as in the capital improvement plan. That, as you know, is part of our strategic plan. We're going to look to establish a standing Parks Advisory Committee. We do have four residents who are, have demonstrated interest in serving on that committee. And we would look to make those appointments at the next board meeting next month. And as well as, you know, however many board members you would like to appoint along with that, so that we can consolidate all the efforts with the Site Plan Committee and Parks Rec. And there's been a number of committees over the years. And we'll have a lot of activity, obviously, into the future. That advisory committee will play an important role for us. Don't know if the Board had any other thoughts on that, or questions, or if you will be prepared to maybe name those board members at the next meeting, perhaps?
Any other discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Germaine?
Yes.
Trustee Petrucci?
Yes.
Supervisor Fountain?
Yes.
Treasurer Horning?
Yes.
Clerk Chofu?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Resolution passed.
Thank you. Item number nine, A, is Rhodes Resolution of Intent to Use Bonds. Good evening.
Good evening.
It's Mr. Eklund, correct? If you'd like to come forward, please. And whatever you're comfortable, either, you know, if you want to sit and stand.
I don't know.
You represent John.
I'm John Ax's partner with Ax and Eklund.
All right.
And I can do a brief summary of the resolution and open it up. Now, this is the first resolution that's going to come before you were in your road project. As we have written this current resolution, it's for not to exceed an amount of $6,450,000. And we also allow you to break it up into two series. This, the real crux of this resolution is allows to get the notice of intent in the paper, which gets the referendum period running to make sure that if there's no petition started, that you'll be able to move forward then with your bond resolution and the actual bond sale. Once we get to the bond resolution, then we'll narrow that dollar amount down to the phase you want to do in 2015. And then you'll be able to then go ahead under the same notice of intent and then do your bond issue in 2016. And that's really the crux of it. I'm happy to answer any questions.
James, when we discussed this at our administration meeting, you suggested the first bond would be maybe $2.5 million?
That's what we're looking at, yeah.
So if, was it $6.5? Was the total?
$6,450,000.
Close. So that would mean if we went to the second one, it could be up to $4 million?
Yeah, year two is in that $4 million ballpark.
Okay. And the balance of the dollars would be used for the second phase of projects, perhaps in five years down the road?
Right, yeah. Different, you know, stormwater, other things that were put into the plan.
And could that be bonded as well down the road?
It could be. I anticipate it probably cash flow those.
Okay, all right. Questions from the Board? I'm trying to locate the, is there a resolution?
Yes, there is.
Trying to find it. I pack it here. Is it, is it the Rhodes Resolution of Intent of Issue Bonds?
That's it.
Yes, I do.
Entertain a motion for the discussion?
Move to approve the resolution of intent to issue capital improvement bonds for Rhodes.
Support. Motion by Treasurer Horning, second by Trustee Germaine. Is there any discussion? Being none, I'll have the clerk please call the roll.
Treasurer Horning?
Yes.
Trustee Colaini?
Absent.
Trustee Harper?
Absent.
Trustee Petrucci?
Yes.
Trustee Germaine?
Yes.
Supervisor Fountain?
Yes.
Clerk Chofu?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution passed.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is item number 10A, Classification and Compensation Study. I'll turn this over to Manager Wickman.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Obviously, the meat of what we have tonight is here in these discussion items, including the budget. Before, we went further beyond the general fund of the budget, we have some unresolved recommendations on the table regarding the classifications and compensation study. Those are having to do with the revised job descriptions that I proposed to make those more concise and to the point, as well as the pay grade, the collapsing of the pay grades, as I proposed based on the new market data. As it relates to the job descriptions, I know that the, there's also a draft out there that's being looked at by the manager committee. And the full complement of that committee is not here or had a chance to finish that work. So we can pull that off the table if it pleases the Board. The balance of those job descriptions, as I've recommended them, and have also followed up based on your question to show side-by-side with the current job descriptions. I'd like to hear the Board's feedback if we can move forward with those. And we'll put them on a future agenda, or if there's other direction the Board would have.
This is the job descriptions portion, or the compensation study?
Well, job descriptions, that's the classification piece of it. So just the job descriptions first, if that.
Job descriptions?
Yeah.
I like the new job descriptions. I feel it's a guide for any job. And I think every job description in there says, or anything else, necessary for the department to function. So I like the shorter, clearer job descriptions.
And I would add to that, that I know that James didn't create these in a vacuum. They were developed with input from staff and from the directors. And so I think that, you know, everyone of our township employees are on board with it. It'd be a wise thing to move forward with.
Any other discussion? Entertain a motion?
Yeah, no need for a motion tonight. If there's consensus on that, we can put it on the next agenda to approve those. Then on the compensation piece, you have the pay grades that were recommended. That brings those down from 26 pay grades down to eight, where we have employees banded together based on the evaluation we did of their respective roles and responsibilities. And then the midpoints of those pay grades were established based on the market data that we had collected and the percentiles, the methodology I talked about before. And the Board has not completed its discussion of those recommendations. And I would hope that we could wrap that up tonight so we can finalize decisions related to the pool established by the Board for wage adjustments. So with that, I'm happy to entertain questions or thoughts from the Board.
James, page 224 in the packet, I know this is probably going to mess everybody up, but I don't, I couldn't open up the other one. It's, I think it's that Classification Compensation Study Pay Grades Structure?
Okay.
10AA. Does that help?
I'll get there. Keep going, I'll get there.
In our admin meeting, we had quite a lengthy discussion as to where people currently are, if you were to go to the nine different or eight different levels. And some of the individuals that we currently have are going, are making less than what the new grade would be, correct?
Correct.
And not very many, but some.
Yes.
So the question came up is, if you hired somebody new into that spot, what would be the minimum wage? And that minimum wage would be the recommended range that's currently here. However, if you have somebody that's here currently, James's proposal is, over the next three to four years, to bring those individuals up to the minimum. Is that a fair statement?
At the least. And some of them would make it in the first year, just by virtue of an average rate.
James has the ability to use that pool money that he currently has, that we have already adopted, to use those dollars to bring individuals up to the minimum if he felt, or the staff, or the manager of that department could put that recommendation in.
Yeah, yeah.
And, well, to be fair, there's one or two employees on here that don't even make the minimum of the current pay grade.
Well, first of all, you can't start somebody at 781 an hour anymore.
Right.
Yeah.
I understand that, yes. So if you look at that page, I asked James to put this on there. And then the ones that are green, if I correct me if I'm wrong again, James, it's the colored, the colored green, those are the individuals that currently are here that are below the new recommended minimum.
Correct.
As you can see, there's not very many. And we've also decided, at this point, to leave the election workers?
Out of it, yeah.
Out of it, until after Larry has an opportunity to go through this and define it. And a big chunk of that was in his compensation study. I'm trying not to put words in your mouth.
Yeah, there was half of the, it was like $10,000, $11,000, $12,000 difference a year that it would make if, in order to bring all those people up to the new minimum. Half of it was the election workers, the other half was existing staff.
And part of that discussion was the food and such that's involved during the election.
Yeah, that's right.
We weigh that into the program.
So if you look at page 262, that's the one where I took that same table and added two more columns that you had asked for, Mr. Supervisor, related to the recommended pay grades, and then what the new comp ratio would be if those pay grades were established. And that's where that equals 100%, whereas currently we're at that 89, 91% level. What page was that? It's on page 262 of the packet. It's under 10AB, if that helps you. I can... So do we know how much, I mean, it just seems to me that if you change your pay rates, or classifications and all that, if you would hire somebody new, they would get more than somebody already here that has experience. It doesn't seem fair to me. I'm just kind of wondering how much it would cost to bring these people up to where they should be brought up to, and call it a pay adjustment rather than a raise? Sure. I mean, do we know what that figure is? That'd be that, I mean, while we're using some of the pool for that purpose, but I mean, and the roundest number was about $5,000 or so to bring all those people up to the, if we establish those new pay grades. I would, I would be in favor of something like that. I don't, I don't...
Let's do this, let's do what's on the table first, is the compensation study, then let James come back with a recommendation at our next meeting. If that's the pleasure of the Board. I just, I don't want to confuse both tonight.
I understand. I just bring that out as discussion, but I... Well, it's a fair piece of it. And we're in budget discussion anyway. If we want to move that direction, I have no argument. I've taken the most conservative approach to it, and...
I'd just like the full Board to be here for that.
I see, that's right.
Since we just started.
Well, we're not going to vote on it anyway, so are we? Well, what I would get tonight is consensus, yeah, that the, that the pay grades, we can move forward with the new pay grades and put those into the General Appropriations Act at the next meeting. And then we can distribute the pool based on that understanding of the new pay grades. And then if you, if the Board would like to discuss next month doing something more to make sure everybody's at the minimum, we can do that.
Won't that affect, I mean, if you're doing the pay grade, using some of that merit increase to raise some people up, and you later on decide that those people are going to be moved up to the minimum, did you use some of your merit?
Yeah, we certainly, yeah. It could have an impact. I don't know that, I don't know. I guess I'd have to think that one through, if that would have a detrimental impact to what we've already decided and what the pools are established for each department. It would just add more to it, frankly. I guess I don't see it as detrimental to what we're trying to accomplish. Because at the end of the day, I mean, the lowest of the wage adjustments are really quite reasonable. And to divert money back into, you know, making the bigger adjustments overall probably doesn't make sense either.
I agree with Joe's comment that, you know, we've spent time and effort to evaluate whether the township is paying competitive wages with other townships that are in the, in the state. And for us to have that knowledge and then not, in those instances where it's a legitimate reason to, that someone does, you know, should make more money, given everything we know in their capabilities and ability to follow instructions and all the other things that you would typically evaluate an employee on, I think that taking the most conservative approach of a three or four-year period is too long. I think that sends the wrong signal. I would be in favor of a much more rapid adjustment.
If it pleases the Board, we can pick that conversation up next month. And otherwise, if there's consensus on moving forward with these recommended pay rates?
Before we, I just want to understand on this page, you've got some of the MTA percentile. Is that, that was the proposed mid-range? Or that's what, that's what the average?
That's the market average for that position. Then you, that number was, I ran that against, to the left, the midpoint of the recommended pay ranges, to come up with a percent. to the left, the midpoint of the recommended pay ranges to come up with a percentage.
When I bring these up, I'm not picking on anybody, no individual. So this, and I'm just, this is just random. Finance, just so I understand your numbers that are in front of us. The finance clerk, the average for the MTA percentile is 1816 an hour?
Correct.
Your midpoint is 1965 an hour?
Yes.
So compared to everybody else, if we bring that individual to 1965, they're 8% over the midrange.
The market for other finance clerks, yes.
Right. So my question is, why didn't we just use that number as the midrange?
So this is a blend of external and internal comparables. So we've looked out at the market and what other finance clerks in other townships are earning. We've also looked internally at what the roles and responsibilities of our finance clerk in Heartland Township and specific duties have been delegated and I believe, and I think this confirms, is that, you know, the role and the authority that's been, the responsibility of the finance clerk here is higher than you would find in most other townships like ours. And that tends to have a role in that type of thing. And then just the blending of making sure that your internal comparability between jobs, that similar responsibilities and roles on the job, impact of errors, environmental concerns, all those things that go into trying to come up with a fair compensation. When you look at the finance clerk in relation to those other five positions in that band, they're all very comparable. So it does not make sense for there to be a divergence in their pay grades.
And I'm just trying to lay it all out.
Yeah.
Did you take into consideration when you put your actual for Heartland Township in here, did you weigh how many years employees have been here as well compared to your, because if somebody works here 20 years-
Sure.
My guess is that they're gonna be at the higher end than somebody that's just at their average.
The actual there is, just for a reference point for you, it doesn't factor into how the recommendation of the pay grades. We're looking just at the data, market data to say what now. To your point, it may be that all of the finance clerks in all the townships in Michigan have been there for 25 years and does that mean that, you know, that's artificially, I don't, I think that'd be a bit much. I think because it's such a wide sampling of data, that equalizes itself over the data that you have, a dispersment of just as many one-year finance clerks as you do of 30-year finance clerks and so on.
Okay, then my last question is if under planning assistant two, they were at the top of their maximum pay grade-
Yes.
Now they have the ability to go a lot farther.
With the new pay grades, correct.
New pay grades. I just, and again, I'm just trying to understand, there's a big difference between planning assistant two and the current pay grade compared to like the project coordinator or even deputy clerk. There's a pretty big difference to begin with. And now that maximum for project coordinator is even less in their maximum than-
Correct. That's right. So some went up, some went down and the, when it all, when the dust settled, so to speak. What you don't see on there is-
I guess, and let me ask you this, why wouldn't those, were they misappropriated or in the wrong pay grade to begin with? Because if you look at, I'm not trying to make this complicated, I'm just trying, going through the numbers here. Take project coordinator, it was from 1789 to 24. Why wouldn't they have been at like a number six then? Is it because the skill set is greater for the people at six than five and all the different things?
That the roles and responsibilities of six, we did the, so that's the point factor job evaluation. That's the last appendix in that study and that's where we evaluated the roles and responsibilities of the job, the impact of their decisions and mistakes and all those things. And I don't think it's, I could see how you might conclude they were in the wrong pay grade to begin with. I don't think that's fair. It's just we made the best judgment we could with an incomplete system at the time. Use of this point factor job evaluation was not in our toolbox before and we were, as we added positions over the years, you know, we did the best we could to try to, you know, write those job descriptions and discern, you know, in relation to other positions and other pay grades, is that higher or lower? But this was sort of a zero, starting from zero with this study. We took all the positions, took them through a job evaluation process and assigned points. And when the point totals were added up, you had the phenomenon where some positions were brought together into a similar band.
Other questions from the board? Trustee Jermaine?
Good.
Judge Horney?
I'm good.
I'm alright.
Do you need a motion?
Don't need a motion. If there's consensus, it'll be on the next agenda.
I would ask Larry though if he thinks he will have a chance to review the wages for election workers by our next meeting so we can make this table be comprehensive for all employees. You think so?
Yep.
But the other factor was that we currently have meals for the election workers and the others don't. So that this wage has to be calculated accordingly to what the value of that is.
Is that why you wanna remove?
That's why we thought we would wait until after, because there's only one election this year.
Tell that, Larry.
And then Larry get through this election, then reevaluate. That's the way we talked about it at the administration.
That makes sense, huh? That makes sense.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
Alright. Anything else on that? If you have a consensus, James?
Thank you.
Might I go through your budget?
I suppose.
This is, we've already got your general fund, so this is all the-
The rest.
All the rest.
And get them done tonight, right?
We said we were gonna be done by 8:45.
Talk fast.
If we wanna start with 206 fund-
Yeah, that'd be fine. James, are you gonna, can you put that on?
I will do that, thank you.
Do you have any idea what page it would be on?
Yeah, 318-ish.
Page 318?
Mm-hmm.
Good evening, Mr. Carroll. How are you?
Good evening. Well, yourself?
Pleased to be here.
Congratulations on your nice awards dinner.
Oh, thank you.
Very nice.
Very well. It was probably one of the events we have the most fun with every year, so.
What page is it? About 318.
Oh, I have 318.
Adam, if you wanna start with any highlights of what they might see in the budget, as I pull it up, we can-
Sure, absolutely. So the budget that's submitted for the draft from the fire authority board includes, there's two primary things. I think everybody here is pretty comfortable with how the usage formula works, but I don't wanna gloss over that, so.
I think we do, we went through it again with Larry just the other day, just to get him on, it's a three-year rolling percentage based on runs.
And, well, and the key to usage is it's purely hours, literally. If you wanna call it people hours spent in each municipality. The original formula used a function called call volume. And the problem with call volume is it's, it's, well, it's an accurate form of measurement because no call is the same. There's structural firefighting which, you know, we pour hours and hours into and has an average cost of about $6,000. And then there's the standard medical emergency that we take care of for, let's say, maybe $250. Well, each of those counts as a call. Well, that's, from an expense standpoint, that's just not reasonable. So we converted that to usage, which is truly by the hour. It is also just time spent in each municipality proper. So it does not include mutually given to outside agencies and it does not include any activity that we do in contracted areas of Tyrone Township. It's just in Heartland Township proper, Deerfield Township proper incidents only by the hour, so. Flip side of that, the, probably the most substantive change you'll see budget-wise, in fact, and not probably, it just plain is, is due to a transition we made in October. We have been migrating our staffing model for a number of years and been pretty successful with engaging our existing on-call staff in covering a, well, ever increasing call volume. That has some fluctuation to it on a year-to-year basis, but on average is still following that trend of somewhere between 8 to 10% per year increase in call volume. Now, that's not ours. That's literally just raw call volume. There are a number of things that we do to manage that call volume and try to keep that ceiling as low as possible, but much like the stock market, it's just this continual chase up the ladder kind of thing. So one of the primary management tools we have is what we call our predetermined medical response. We do run in support of the county EMS system. We provide a medical first responder level of service. In fact, we provide a basic EMS level of service as we sit here today. That's our largest tool simply because it's, excuse me, it's also represents around 38% of our call volume. That call volume is much more manageable for us from the standpoint of we are not the sole agency responding to that call. Obviously, there is a transporting ALS ambulance service that also responds to all of those. So what we do is track and monitor and see how, a couple of things, how the county ambulance service is doing in covering the calls in our jurisdiction. In other words, how timely are they? Cause they are chasing the same thing as we are. They being the primary agency, kinda like fires for us, have no solution other than to, as call volume gets unmanageable, put more rigs on the road, provide more people to handle that volume. The flip side for us is we don't necessarily have to. So we employ some other management tools of how quickly are they responding to the calls? How many times are we on scene for a substantive amount of time longer than their arrival time? And what type of service are we delivering to those calls? So on every, about every six-month basis, we look at the data and then we make an adjustment. If it's a stark adjustment, we'll make it right then. If not, we wait for the end of the year so that once a year, there's kind of a rerun of what our predetermined medical response is to ensure that we're kind of getting ourselves off of the call volume where we're not delivering any quantifiable level of service and ensuring that there aren't some other call types that are propped up that we could and should be delivering level of service based on either response times or the type of call. At this point, we, from an EMS standpoint, respond to what are considered tier-one emergencies or they're actually delta and echo calls, which are life-threatening emergencies only. Now, I will tell you, the flip side of that is we're reliant on dispatch information. So that's true of every call type that there is in the world. So to sit here and tell you we only ever go to incidents that are only life-threatening would be slightly misleading. When folks call 911, generally speaking, it's the worst day of their life and their interpretation of what is really going on can be a little exaggerated. No fault of theirs, completely understandable, but that's the type of thing we manage through that, that kind of call monitoring process that we go through every six months. The big change in the budget, to circle that back around, is due to the call volume increases, lots of changes of other things. Over time, we've added staff. So we started off with daytime during the week and that was many moons ago, primarily because of availability of staff. Daytime during the week, one of the things that has changed certainly over my career is the number of folks that we have available during the day during the week. Back a while ago, there were a number of folks that were available during the day. A lot of the fire department was made up of folks that were in the trades and were available to leave during the day. That has changed. In addition to that, really the family dynamic has changed to where at least one, if not both folks in the family are both holding out full-time jobs, some of them holding out two jobs. So the time available for the average resident to give to the fire department has dwindled. In addition to that, you know, add commitments to raising children and all that other thing that goes with it and the amount of time available for the average individual to give to the fire department has gone down. At the same time, the amount of time needed to be a firefighter has gone up. And both of those have been very dramatic changes. How we have adapted to that is kinda working with our existing on-call staff to at peak times or when times when hours particularly short, is add what's called dedicated staffing. They're on-call employees, but they actually work a scheduled shift. They're still welcome to come back for other calls also. It's not the only thing they do, but it helps cover those calls, especially what we call single company calls. Or a lot of the EMS work and some of the other smaller incidents, it can be handled with one truck and a crew kind of thing. That does two things for us. Obviously, it keeps our response times low, keeps our quality of service very high, but the big upside for us with a almost exclusively on-call department is that it really helps in our retention side from burning folks out. There's only so many times you can get up at 3 o'clock in the morning, two, three, four days a week and still get up in the morning and go to your regular job. And that's really what a lot of this has happened. It's allowed those folks to not have to get up however many times or not be available simply because they're out of town, have to get to work, whatever it is. And we can cover those single company calls with the staff that's on duty. The big transition we made last October was moving to, we'd added night shifts, skip ahead. So we added night shifts during the week, Monday through Thursday night. And it was, again, targeting that nighttime for our on-call staff that there's actually quite a bit of call volume that happens during that time. And so the last step for that was kinda closing that gap from Friday at 5:00 PM until Monday morning at 7:00 AM. We did that by doing two things. One is obviously adding those shifts as scheduled. So there's two people on, in essence, around the clock at this point. And then we added a operations captain, which is a full-time position for a couple of reasons. One of which was to coordinate that scheduled shift work. The other reason was to give us, for lack of a better term, another command staff body to use to ensure that not only do we have two people on duty, but at all times, we have a command staff officer who's committed, available, on duty to handle whatever the response is that comes up. And I'll tell you, prior to that, that was a juggling act between myself and two of the other chief officers that we just kinda did on the fly, by phone, by text messages, by whatever, trying to make sure that one of us was always available. And that's, we'll call it challenging. What adding that person did is allow us to, kind of the breathing room, to ensure that somebody is committed on shift at the time to handle a surprising amount of the stuff that we used to have to do on the fly, by the phone, in my living room, or whatever it might be. So the two changes, the two changes there are an increase that you'll see in primarily wage categories. One was that capless position, which we had budgeted for and carried the prior year, basically to prove that we could do it. So that is a shift from the, what used to be 708.3, is now moved up into its own category. And then the other ones are kind of distributed between primarily the sergeants and firefighter categories are the other, basically wage line items that cover the rest of that scheduled staff for the period from, like you said, from 5:00 PM Friday through 7:00 AM Monday, which is the hole that we had in our schedule. The balance of the items changed in there. Our, we did some moving around in the professional fees section. We had gone through a period where we were going to attempt to do some contracting for some HR services. That has evolved to the point where we've kind of moved all that stuff back inside our own offices. We still use that person as a reference, I suppose, or a consultant, but it's pretty rarely, and even less rare than that, do we get charged for it. So we were able to move a lot of that service back inside and it's done by a combination of folks, but primarily the accountant who actually had an HR background originally. So that worked out quite well.
I do have a question on that 708.8.
Say that again?
The accountant wages?
Okay.
Why it's doubled?
Not exactly that.
That's what you're talking about.
Yeah.
That's not.
Yep. So- So, it was accountant period. She has absorbed what we were budgeting for HR down in professional fees.
It's the same, isn't it? Accounting and audit and payroll service, the 801?
No. Well, that one might be. There's-
Because that's 11,500 versus 10,500.
Right, but the HR piece, well, there's two things going on there. Payroll service is one of them. There's three things rolled up in there. Part of that was originally a budget of $12,000 for this pilot HR thing. We didn't know how many hours we were going to spend, we were estimating. It ended up being less, a little bit less than that. Up in the accounting piece, the accounting hours have expanded on their own. In addition to that, we added some HR responsibilities. So, there's a little bit of HR and there's a little bit of accountant. Both increases on what you see in the 708.8. Down in 800, we transitioned from doing payroll inside to using payroll service, which has gone, well, from the employee's standpoint, well, from administrative's standpoint, there have been some challenges working with that company. In fact, we're looking at other options again. But, and then, the other piece is the audit. So, the audit is paid for out of that fund also.
Still doesn't make sense to me, but I don't want to, I don't want to-
Um-
I'll ask you later about it.
Yeah, it's not, there's no straits. Um, I can't tell you-
You've got a line item on 708.8 that's been between 12 and $10,000 for four years in a row, and it's doubling. And if you look at accounting and payroll service, it's actually, it's going up 1,000 from last year, but it's been steady almost all the way across.
Yep. I can provide you the breakouts, show you how I did that math, but-
It's not a big deal. I just, it's something that just kind of caught my eye, and I'm surprised that we would have to spend twice as much in accounting as we did last year, which is what it looks like to me. Just a question.
Yeah, it's a blend of some increase in accounting, some addition of some HR responsibilities, and it's not even close to a complete offset. In fact, I, anyway, from the professional fees category simply because there were some new professional fees thing added to those sections, such as the payroll service, such as slight step increase in the audit costs.
I can get with you later on that, Adam.
Quick question, if I may. I apologize, I'm sure they asked you before. On the revenue side, the fire protection contract, I mean, Tyrone Township is at risk. If they're unable to renew that millage, is it, if that goes away, our contribution's going to have to go up to offset somewhat, or is that going to, yeah?
Somewhat, yep. It wouldn't be a dollar-for-dollar trade. It would need to go up somewhat. And, so, the status of that at the moment is their current SAD is good through March 31, 2016. So, it goes through this complete fiscal year that we're talking about.
Tyrone.
Yep, Tyrone stuff. They are actually very busy at trying to ensure that they can get that thing resurrected and fixed before that happens. They had contemplated hitting the, help me out, March?
May.
No, May. The May election. My understanding is they may have decided not to be on that ballot.
This May?
Yeah.
They are not?
It's probably a very wise move.
Which is a good move, too.
But, they actually have been very hard at work, kind of surveying the residents, getting some feedback. They had employed a consultant to assist them in that process, and they have every intention of a full-court press to make sure that they get that fixed ahead of the expiration date of it. Not the least of which is considering splitting it back out into its component parts and putting the question out to the residents and a lot of other things that they're considering. So, they're making the moves like they're doing the right things that I think they'll get it fixed up. Obviously, time will tell, but-
And again, to follow up with James' question, what impact would that have on our budget?
Well, the revenue from that contract would be lowered. I have been contacted by a prior group we contacted with in the township, who has already indicated that if that were to fall through, they would want to resume that contract again. So, in essence, instead of an estimated 120, probably closer to 30 in contract revenue. The flip side to that is, our costs are not 100% of revenue. There's some risk associated there, especially in the contracting formula that they're using where it's a flat rate per call, that, you know, it's a complicated story, but the short version is, if they want to pay per call, the risk is on our side of the table. So, that cost per call keeps us in a safe place where we are risking not a lot. So, when most years play out like they usually do, our costs don't quite equal the revenue side, which means we'd have to make that up, that difference. There's certainly a cost in responding to and covering those calls. The contract revenue certainly covers that.
So, you said they're good through this, a year from the spring?
Yes, they either run the same-
So, you will know by next November?
Correct.
Ah, sooner than that, yeah.
Well, if they don't have an election in November.
Yeah.
Yeah, they've got a couple of options. Obviously, they could wait for the next election to come around, which is one of them. They could host a special. I kind of tend to think they won't do that simply because of the costs involved. And, you know, outside of that, it is an SAD. Theoretically, by action of the board, they could just do it and see how they fare. I don't know. The other option would be, they scrap the SAD project completely and just go for an election. And I don't know that, you know, don't know enough Tyrone voters to know whether they have a taste for that or not, but that's on the table, I know.
So, we, that's going to be something we'll have a discussion on, if it doesn't go through-
Absolutely.
And the impact it could have on your department?
Absolutely.
Okay. Other questions from the board? Mr. Jermaine, do you have any questions?
No.
Mr. Jermaine? Joe? You know those numbers.
All right, we discussed them for about three weeks.
One last, just maybe for those that are still listening at home, you do have a dollar amount allocated every year towards capital improvements out of this budget, correct?
Yes, sir.
And it's $170,000 this year?
That's correct.
And that's still on your, at one point, you had, I think, a 10- or 15-year plan for equipment replacement?
Yes.
And those dollars are allocated towards those replacements, correct?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, we are on track with the capital.
And that's all in the 10-year plan?
Yes, sir.
Was your millage 10 years last time?
The last one was a 10-year, yeah.
So, we must be, what, you're eight or seven left or so?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. We're just going to, we don't have to do anything until-
No, we'll keep moving. 209 cemeteries.
Thank you for your time. James, so I can follow along. Are we going back up to where we started with this? Will it be in line with-
Well, we'll go back to 204, the road millage.
We have spent a lot of time on the road millage.
Yep, and there's really no detailed plan here yet because that plan's being worked out. We did plug in some placeholders for that fourth application of chloride and for the village drain project that will become in the second year out, but there'll be more to come on this. We'll talk about that as the plan and the timing of projects become more clear. If there is no questions on that, I will-
James, just, is this kind of in order with the pages that are, everything can be bouncing around?
No, I should be going in order of pages.
Can you let me know what page you're on?
Uh, yeah, this initial part is going to be bouncing a little bit. Yeah, that one was, if you want to go, let's see the road millage. So, chance can that be on page 314?
314, okay. So, we should be able to continue just keep going down from there?
Uh, no, because we took the fire front out of order. So, you have to go down to page 322?
Okay, thanks.
Three what? 322, if you're using the agenda packet. I'm using the portfolio that were there all kind of bookmarked together. So, cemetery fund, that just sucks money out of the general fund, that's what that does. And pretty straightforward operation. You'll note, there is a capital outlay project scheduled for this year that had been in the CIP that the board adopted last year, that was to do some fencing repairs. We will use existing trust fund dollars for that. Our goal is to use those trust fund dollars for their intended purposes and basically to use them up so we don't have to carry them on the books anymore. But, otherwise, nothing really to earth shattering, I trust you will find.
Any questions on cemetery? We can move forward.
212 liquor law. Used to use part of this on the sheriff contract. We don't have that. We still do liquor law inspections with our zoning inspector, and that, when they're doing that job, their wages are paid out of this. And we do contract with the sheriff department for some sting operations for underage buying. We did one of those last year. We'll probably do two or three this year. We're talking to them now. And otherwise, that fund balance, we're not spending it all at the end of the day, and that money would be available for additional projects should we expand, you know, our policing contracts or whatever down the road.
And just real briefly, we discussed about having the most sting operation happen. The businesses that pass, we'd get a letter from the township?
Yeah, we did that this last year.
You know, that there was a sting and you passed.
And given our thanks, and then, we only had one out of the 20-some that, you know, didn't pass. Looking forward, and I know it's coming, the time when everybody passes, and we would certainly celebrate that. Rather than trying to catch somebody to do something wrong, celebrate when we're doing good.
Thank you.
Yep. The next few funds are your SAD funds for roads, rolling hills, M59, Hartland shores, Oar Valley. Nothing too compelling there, paying back bonds and interfund loans and all that good stuff. Obviously, Oar Valley is, we have collected on the SAD this year. That project will start next year. Any questions on any of those?
Just briefly, on the M59 road improvement bond?
Yep.
Was that, is that the Ramco bond?
Yes.
And how many more years are on that? Was that, was that, was it more than a-
I think it was a 15-year.
A 15-year? Okay.
Any, anything on 353, 54, 56, 57 of those SADs? All right, moving right along, 401 Capital Projects Fund?
Where am I now?
Yeah, I'm not using yours.
Which one are you on now?
401 Fund, that's-
329.
329. I'm using the other one because the numbers aren't cut off.
It's a lot easier to use that one.
Yeah, no, I'm with you, that's one. So, what you see here reflects the capital improvement plan that the board approved last year. And so, projects are lined up for this year and for the second year out based on that CIP. You'll note a couple of them, we've, some of them reflect, some of the bigger, some of those bigger projects were in the second year out, and we've put some money in this year's budget to start the planning, engineering, design, get the groundwork laid so that come 2016, '17, we get those projects done. But, these numbers all reflect the CIP that you adopted. Now, of course, when we adopted it, there was a lot of conversation. The parks plan wasn't done yet, and, you know, we anticipated that the CIP out of that parks plan might change some priorities and interests of the board, and that, and certainly, when we update the CIP, we're going to do that whole process again later this spring in May-June time period. That'll play out. This is the budget for the projects we're planning to do this year based on the CIP. And so, if the board has other ideas, we need to know that.
I would like to have this be an agenda item.
Sure.
Perhaps even at our next meeting, just so we're all on the same page as to what we've agreed upon this coming year.
Okay.
I think it's important that that gets in front of us again.
Is that, I mean, so we'll be adopting a budget that anticipates we're going to do what we said we would do last year, but we can put the CIP on the butt, on the agenda?
I just think for something that's far down the road and our memories slip, or my memory slips.
Sure.
You guys have sharp memories.
I mean, nothing for this year, you know, we're looking at doing benches. Second year out is where we're looking at those concession stand, restroom, picnic pavilions, playgrounds. This year's project at Settlers was going to be the dog park. That budget number is in there. And then, the second year out was also when we were looking at the wayfinding, gateway and wayfinding, and the fitness workout stations at Settlers Park. All right, anything else on capital projects? 408 is just a construction fund temporarily set up for the Oar Valley project. Nothing of much interest there.
That's going to happen this spring?
Yeah.
Or this summer? June, summer?
So, 536 is a water system, based on the board's last discussion on the potential move in-house for staff operation of the water system. The budget that's presented here reflects that transition with an estimated date of the six-month point, October 1st. So, you'll see in the first-year budget, you'll see a blend of the contract costs for those first six months, and then, staff costs coming onboard at about the six-month mark. And then, the second-year projection reflects, you know, what we are projecting for, to sustain that for a full year's worth of staff operation of the water system. There was an update to this one, and that was included in your packet as a separate attachment. There is a, if we terminate the contract with United Water, we will have to pay off a lump sum of the water tower maintenance that had been spread out over a number of years, I think it was five years. They've done most of the work as part of that. They just spread out the payment for us, but we would have to pay that as a lump sum, what's left of that if we terminate. So, in your packet, you'll find an updated 536 reflecting that.
And we are going to have further discussion as a board on this?
This is the point, I mean-
I know we're budgeting it, but weren't we still going through some additional discussion?
This is the point at which we anticipate that discussion, where we left at the board was, you know, no firm decision from the board. There was interest in continuing to pursue the path, and we were asked to include it in the budget, so that at budget time, you could decide whether to move forward with it or not.
Well, this discussion is not going to, it's going to take us two hours to get through it if we're going to try to continue it tonight.
We had the discussion about trying to look at the long-term plans for that department-
Right.
At the conclusion of a long meeting one night, people kind of were-
I know that, but my concern is if, that by approving this budget, that we're going forward, going in-house. That's the way I understand how this is being presented in front of us. And it's still having, in my personal opinion, we as a board still haven't had closure if we're going down that way yet or not. Am I wrong saying that?
No, I agree with you, but I think that even if we approve the budget as is and decide not to change, we can change the budget.
That's not the way I understood James. James basically just said though, by us approving this budget, that we are going forward.
Both statements are true. I mean, you can, we're budgeting at least for the six months to continue with the contract relationship. Between now and then, the board can make a firmer decision or change its mind how it wants to keep going with it before it comes time to give a notice of terminating the contract.
I understand, but I think there's a lot of discussion to be had at the table here before, before we start.
Okay.
I know you're budgeting for it, but budgeting for it and it actually happening, I think, are two different.
I understand that. I guess I would be concerned that that's not necessarily, where I wasn't sure that's where we left it the last time. If the board's remembering that differently than me, that's fine. I understand there's no firm decision made. There was some consensus to move in that direction. I couldn't gauge how much more discussion the board has to have on it in order to make that decision. I did not, it would be a surprise to me that it would, we, whatever the decision is- I did not, it would be a surprise to me that it would, we, whatever the decision is, would take that much more discussion.
All I'm suggesting is that the way it was stated just now by yourself.
Yes.
Is that we're moving forward and we're bringing it in-house in six months.
I presented a budget.
And I, so, and I disagree with that. And I don't know if the rest of the board feels that same way. That's my question. I did miss a meeting in December, maybe you talked about it. So we need to have that discussion that we're all behind going forward, bringing the water in-house.
Yes. And I presented a budget that reflects that. And if you approve the budget, it would be an indication that maybe we'll go in that direction. But if you're saying you prefer to adopt that budget and postpone that discussion to another time, that is your privilege.
I just don't think we're going to get through that whole, I mean, that's a whole, that's at least a couple hour meeting. I'm not saying it's going to take months, but we still have to have a consensus of the board.
Well, if that's the case, I understand. I, it is somewhat surprising to me that it would take us that long to reach that point. Whatever that decision is, given the amount of time we've already invested in the discussion.
My point is though, you've already budgeted in to have it start to happen.
Because that's what the board asked us to do at the last meeting. We discussed it. The board asked me to present it in the budget of what those costs would be if we made that transition.
James, I don't disagree with it. But there's a lot of information here in front of us that has to be deciphered before. I would be comfortable saying.
Sure.
Let's go forward. That's what I'm suggesting.
Okay.
Do you think it would be wise to schedule a separate meeting to discuss this further?
Whatever pleases the board. If there, if we anticipate that there is a great deal of discussion we have to have on various points. One, I guess I need to understand or hear what those issues are to make sure that you have the information you need to make an informed decision. So whatever those issues are, please, please let me know. We don't have to solve them tonight, of course. Resolving and making a decision on this soon and then later is important for planning purposes. We, we need to be able to plan out our work for the year and make sure that we meet strategic plan goals.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
Yeah, sure.
But it's going to be hard for me to give my blessing on something that I don't think our board has had full discussion on.
Sure. That's, I was anticipating that tonight. If we, the sooner we can have that discussion, the better.
So we can either have a special meeting or we can meet prior to our next meeting. We'll figure, we can figure that out.
It'd be wise to have everybody present for one.
I agree. I think we just need to, it's been a while since we spoke about it as well. So how about if we talk about it at our admin meeting and we'll get a plan put together? Is that acceptable to the board? Joe, is that acceptable to you?
Matt?
Matt? Okay. All right. We'll put it on the fast track.
Five thirty-seven is the water debt service and five, which is just the bonds, the assessments pay the bonds. That's not the same issues as we have in the sewer necessarily. Five thirty-nine is the water replacement fund, repair and replacement fund. We started this fund a couple of years ago, you'll recall. So the assets, the depreciation and those types of activities are carried in this fund now. And that's where we transferred the lump sum at the beginning of our rate study to carry those costs. The biggest cost there, of course, being depreciation. Related to that is the next attachment, which is the water system CIP. We updated the five-year CIP from what had been originally looked at with the last master plan and rate study. We've been able to outperform that to the benefit of cost savings. We put this in here because you recall, as water is an enterprise fund, when capital expenses are laid out, they don't show up as expense. They're just spent. Those, that work comes before the board, you approve of it, it just doesn't show up in a budget because it's buying an asset or maintain or dealing something to do with a capital or an asset of the system. So we wanted to share with you that CIP. Maybe the most, so the CIP is outperforming what we had projected at the outset, just through good management of the system and identifying the real needs versus things that we could live without, so to speak. And probably the biggest thing you might see in there is the, the expansion of adding a third treatment vessel to the water plant. We've, of course, been talking about that for a number of years. If for some reason we saw additional REUs or expansion of the water system, that would push us over the edge. And what's reflected in that CIP, we would be selling REUs to offset that cost. So that cash flow is there for your reference. Anything on any of the other elements of the water budget? Five seventy-seven is the cable peg fund. All of those revenues, of course, are earmarked for capital equipment, purchase and rental and all of those good things. So we'll continue with some of the projects noted there and, you know, we'll see an increase in the video production parts of what we do. You've seen the first branded video, but we anticipate doing many more of those and this, the peg fund will play an integral role in that. You'll also recall that some of the expenses that had been proposed in the general fund budget, I did move over here as they did fit under the parameters of the peg fund. Any questions on?
No, but I just have a comment. In light of my current broken leg that I have, I was able to watch the meeting last week from home. And I was pleasantly surprised at the quality of the audio, the way the camera operator was changing the directions from person to person. And I was pleasantly pleased with the staff and improvements that we made from years ago when we used to televise the planning commission meetings and the board meetings. So I just wanted to put a plug in for that part of our program here at the township. And I think it's a good thing. I've heard more and more citizens tell me they're actually watching, so that's a good thing.
Matt, did you watch it on your TV or did you watch it online?
I watched it on television.
On television? And the audio was, was fine?
Yes, it was.
Okay, five ninety is our sewer O and M. We have a, we'll have at the next meeting, we'll have an update to the boreal model and the rate study projections. Suffice to say, we're, you know, last year was a good year with the sale of the lands and the prospective sale of more of them. So from a cash flow perspective, we can, you know, carry on with these five ninety projected costs. We did, of course, have the increase to the county sewer rate and we've absorbed that into this budget. And we will be doing a new rate study later this year to reevaluate all of that. So no real major changes that you'll see in this budget.
James, if I can point out, we did find an error in the sewer readiness surcharge. Thank you, Larry, for identifying that. It's a four thousand, so it's not twenty thousand nine seven, it should be two hundred and four thousand nine eighty-seven. You'll see that reflected in the final.
So we found more revenue? Does he get a cut of that? Is that how that works? And then the other sewer funds are SAD two, five ninety-two fund, five ninety-five, five ninety-six of some of the other SADs. We, we don't have to budget for those. We try, we do that as a best practice, but they're pretty unexciting. And the final attachment in your budget pack is the water sewer salary allocation. And for now, that just reflects existing staff. It doesn't reflect anything that might happen with water staff if we have them and how their time gets allocated. We haven't invested the energy to come up with that without knowing for sure which direction we're going. If we do go with in-house operation, that'll be a part of this, you know, allocation of the costs would be their staff time as well. Did we really make it through the budget?
Is there ever doubt?
Kind of, except for water. If, again, if you do have specific thoughts, questions as it relates to the water proposal for in-house operations, please do pass them along to me so that we can make sure you have those answers as we are going to continue those deliberations shortly and put you in a position to make an informed decision.
And James, you can get us the capital improvement plan just so, you know, as part of this budget, just so we know what's on the radar for this year, next year?
We'll put that on, we may want to talk about whether it fit on the next budget or the next agenda. There's a number of things, but we'll, if not, the next one will be the second one in March.
Okay.
Yep.
Was there anything else coming up that we had finalized for the budget process before? We're trying, we're going to act on it at the second meeting in March?
The first meeting.
The first meeting in March.
That'll be the budget hearing. We will have, so we'll distribute the buckets that we already have done or put those into the, the budget or we'll update that and provide that to you for the general appropriations act.
We'll have copies available for individuals?
For the public.
Okay.
On the website.
Anything else on the budget? We'll move on to item number ten C, which is Winterfest debriefing. Good evening, Callie, and how are you?
Very well, thanks.
Thank you, Susan, by the way.
So I'm here this evening just to give an overview of Winterfest that took place on January thirty-first, also to get any input that the board would like to share and hopefully obtain some consensus as to whether you want to go forward for 2016. If that's the case, I need to start chasing some money for that. Very quickly, we had about twenty-five hundred visitors attend our first event. We had anticipated five hundred to a thousand, so we were very pleasantly surprised. It was embraced by the community, certainly by the business community. We were able to reach, raise quite a bit of money. The media also supported it very heavily. Just the two full-page articles in the Argus alone exceed about five thousand dollars in media. It does an account of, account for WHMI promoting it about every half hour for the entire day and all the media we have received. We received about a hundred and fifty surveys, both online and surveys that were completed at the event. A hundred percent were positive. So everybody seemed to enjoy it. And we definitely had the top three events by far were sledding, skating and fireworks. We did have to allocate quite a bit of staff hours because it's the first event. You go down a lot of roads, get halfway down, realize you need to go back and start from scratch. And so we have a lot of lessons learned, but we do think that we can reduce it by at least a third for next year, particularly if we keep the committee structure in place and we're able to talk all the folks that were participating this year into participating for next year. As an aside, this event could not have happened without the committee that was in place. We could not have done it without the schools, the library, Venture Church, All Saints Church and all the other folks that participated. So at this time, I'd like to open up for any questions that you might have.
One question I had was, how did we calculate the cost for staff in-house?
By the number of hours, based on the hourly rate.
And their hourly rate.
So what we'd like to have is, I mean, certainly answer questions and have discussion. We'd like to get the direction from the board on whether to move forward with this event for next year so the planning can get a better start than we did in the very short time we did it this year.
Really kudos for the amazing job and the amount of time that you all put that together. I was shocked to see the amount of thought that went into everything, the residents' reaction to how organized it was, how, I never saw so many happy little kids running around in the winter at one time. The sledding hill was, I don't know, people talking about the high school hockey team mentoring, the little, I mean, it was just so successful. And I know you get a lot of that credit. And I really hope that we do go ahead with this event. I think it was surprisingly, for the first year, a huge success.
Thank you. A lot of the credit goes to Sharon Gratch, who's my, definitely my partner in crime on this one.
What, I mean, the weather was perfect. And the next day was awful. Would there be consideration if, you know, the weather, obviously we can't, we can't deal with that, but would there be consideration for another date or it's just?
We talked about that with the committee. We had a few challenges with that. The first, we depended very heavily on the Ice House Skating Academy, both financially and just all the work they did to maintain that. They were out there with, with pool nets before it froze to make sure nothing got in there. I mean, they were amazing. And they were also a big sponsor. They're really constrained to January because it's National Ice Skating, Figure Skating Month. So they're able to obtain a lot of dollars for that.
Okay.
So they really needed to stay in January. So, but it's, so if we move it farther up in January, then the schools have.
No, I'm not suggesting move it in the upper.
Well, we'd have to have, we'd have to be in January. So if we had a rain day, we would really, because then February, we start hitting, everybody's got something in the winter for some reason. And February, we start hitting the chambers.
I think he's just talking emergency day. What if it wasn't down for a rain day or something? Would it be the next day?
What if we had that blizzard? Would it just have gone on and it is?
Yeah. It would have just gone on.
Oh, it's a cold one.
It smells. We would have sold it on, the sledding hill would have been even more popular.
Yeah.
If that's my only concern is the, it's just something we really can't control. Because there's an awful lot of work that goes in. There's, there's deposits that are made, there's commitments from other companies that are coming out there. And to coordinate that on a rain day would be really difficult, I think. I would like to move forward with it. I thought it was a fantastic day. I, I worry though that we would have a day like the following Sunday. And, you know, in the summertime, you get a storm come through or drizzles for half a day or a day or two, you still get people come out. But in the winter, if we get a storm come through, they're not going to come out, period. And that's a real risk. And, you know, you had some companies who donated quite a bit of money. And if that was not used because it was a cancellation because of the weather, I doubt if you'd get them to do it the following year. So for the first Winterfest that you did, we really got lucky with the weather and people turned out. And it just shows me that the people in this township absolutely want to have some type of a festival. Whether that's the answer or not, it's, I still, the judge is still out on that one. I don't know. But, but I really enjoyed that day. I was out there a lot of that day and I enjoyed it and I know a lot of people who did too. Something to grow on, but it's that risk, it just bothers me, it just really does. So what, what would be your plan? What would actually be the plan if you had? Can you even have a plan?
Well, that's the difficulty because again, for the storm, you know, you can have a plan for the next day, but when a storm hits like Sunday, the next day's not any better than the day before. It's not like a rainstorm and, you know, it's over and now you don't have the next day. You could be out a couple of days. We can definitely talk about it with the committee. We had a lot of scheduling issues that just could not be resolved to fix that, to pick another day.
Well, I would think that if you had a, you know, an alternative day, you probably would have to scale down the Winterfest itself in some way and make some drastic changes to keep it, to carry it on. So you probably would still be able to pull one off, but you may not have the same events or participants able to come.
On the plus side, the three main events that people said they loved the most could easily be replicated.
Right. What about the, when you're renting the, when, were the tents rented and was it, so those were?
By the chamber.
So would that company allow the change in date without having to pay double?
I think it would depend on how far we were able to tell them how far ahead. They set up on Friday, certainly once they set up. They set up on Friday, certainly once they set up.
Right.
Set up.
Yeah.
You know, Joe, in all the years I've been here, I can remember a couple memorial days where it downpour, I might remember my son specifically being in the high school band, and it, the cold downpour sleet almost on our windshield where everybody sat in their car until the last minute, and that was, that was, I remember two of those, you know, that-
Well, I was in them.
Yeah. You know, so it happens, I mean, weather happens.
Yeah, I had a really good, earlier this evening was the State of the County address, and I was talking to Pat Convery, the Howell Chamber President, who's a Hartland Township President, by the way. She, I was kind of telling her about that conundrum, and she said, welcome to my world. I mean, you know, yes, and it's probably equivalent of a downpour in the summer or a cold day or a, or a blazing day, but for the balloon fest, that's wind is so fickle-
That it had years-
I mean, you can, you, you ruin, you have multiple days where it's just, you know, no balloons. And so, you know, her encouragement was to, to press on through that, and obviously there are a number of communities throughout the state who have, you know, whether it's Frankenmuth or Plymouth or Detroit, have events in the winter and you take on some risk with that, but that was just an observation from somebody else.
Yeah, we lived in the Plymouth Canton area where one year the, all the ice melted. The guys were carving it.
There's been, yeah, there's been, I can remember the Plymouth when it was so warm, they couldn't even have the ice carving. So it can happen, I suppose, and I think until, until it does happen, we just move forward with it. That's the way I kind of look at it, but-
I'm, I'm in support of continuing the Winterfest as well. I think if we want to cut our risk in half, we just schedule a summer event. We'll have two events instead of one, and we'll have a better chance of good weather.
No, a 50/50.
Well, it was very well, you guys did a great job all the way around.
Thank you.
And as you see, the, of the business people that stepped up, the volunteers all the way across the board, I don't think you could have asked for a better day.
Well, I think it's a great example of what we can do when we really bring the community together, business community and all the community groups, and we work as a team. To me, having done events for my whole career to have been able to put that together in three months-
Yeah.
Is astounding, and that's, that speaks to the committee.
Larry, do you have any other thing? I think we got a green light in your board to go forward, so.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. All right, anything else? The regular meeting, we'll go to board reports. It is our second meeting already in February. Trustee Jermaine?
I have nothing this evening, sir.
Trustee Petrusi?
I have no report to you.
Chris Shofu?
No report.
Treasure Hurney?
Oh, from the senior center. You know, with all this cold weather, when the schools were closed and snow, they were typical, they used to file the exact school plan. If schools closed, they were closed like the township did years and years ago. The seniors are clamoring, they want to come out, they don't care if it's closed there or what, so they're redoing their policies and they are going to be open on days that school may not be open.
The supervisors in the town, in the county had a meeting last Friday. The discussion was roads and how to properly distribute the, the dollars to each community. One proposal was to do it by population. I don't know if there's necessarily a consensus of the townships that don't have as many people, if that was what they wanted. So that's still up in the air, how that's going to work out. Thursday, there is a meeting at LES A with the county to talk about the proposal of roads, if the, if the sales tax goes through, what would be the process to project. So I believe James and Kathy and I are going-
I think Larry's going to-
And Larry are going to go to that, so we'll have a report for that at our next meeting as well. Manager Wickman?
I think Mr. Supervisor, that you hit on, one of them I was going to mention, we're carpoolsing if, if anybody's interested. Tomorrow, I am following up with the Livingston Land Conservancy. I noted that they are looking for some small office space. I'm going to show them Hero Center and-
Yeah, I went, James, when I forwarded that to you, my intention was that, I know they needed like 200 square feet, and part of it was for having a meeting table, but if they could utilize our table, the one we have there, it might work for them. That's why I forwarded it.
Yeah, that's, well, we'll check that out and see if it's a mutual benefit, and obviously we'll bring that back to the board if that goes anywhere. And we are getting bids for the demolition work on the Reed Road property. The bank that was looking to foreclose on that property has sort of gotten out of the way, if you will, or is not engaged in, in trying to find a solution on their end, so we'll follow through with the board's orders since it, more than a year has gone by and the compliance is out there, and so those bids will be coming to you at a future meeting to approve that work, and then we'll recover our costs through a lien on the property. And just wanted to give a, a kudos to a lot of people in the building, the planning department for sure, the building department granting the temporary certificate of occupancy to Venture Church for their inaugural service this last Sunday. A lot of work on a short timeframe that didn't, really had no obligation to, to jump through all those hoops, but we were able to help facilitate them getting into that building. And lastly, the SAD 200 is starting to come together, so that'll be coming to the board soon. There are a number of property owners, this was a voluntary basis, a number of property owners are looking to sign up for that, so we'll get some closure to that in the near future.
Any rhyme or reason how we number or do SADs?
Well, that one was the 200-foot threshold, it was better than the 200-foot club is what we were naming it.
Got it. So there's the rhyme for reason.
Yes, right. Thought it was a little softer, call it SAD 200.
Got it.
Happy to answer any questions the board may have?
Anything else this evening? Undertaining a motion to adjourn?
Sure moves.
Motion by trustee Petrusi, second by trustee Jermaine. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. Motion carries.